Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. The Board of Trustees of the Harris County Department of Education is now convened in a regular board meeting on Wednesday, August 21st, 2024, in room 401 at 6300 Irvington Boulevard, Houston, Texas, at 1:04 PM. We wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present at this meeting of the Board of Trustees. As trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and set policy for the district. It is not the role of the board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the department are the responsibility of the superintendent. We have policies and procedures in place to resolve concerns and issues. This is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. Prior to this meeting, board members received information related to items on today's agenda. Agenda items will not necessarily be handled in the order listed on the notice. The meeting is open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. During the course of this meeting, the board may determine that a closed session is necessary. In that event, the board will meet in closed session to consider matters duly posted for this meeting as permitted by Section 551.071 to 551.084, inclusive of the Texas Government Code. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking and that cell phones are turned off or in silent mode. Thank you for taking time today to join us and for your interest in the Harris County Department of Education. Okay, so we will get started with the invocation, and we have Robert Bell from IT to do the invocation.
Let's bow with a word of prayer. Dear God, we come before you today seeking your wisdom, guidance, and clarity as we gather to discuss and make decisions. Help us to work together in harmony, keeping the best interest of those we serve at heart. Grant us the insight to find solutions, the strength to pursue them, and the courage to make the right choices. We ask for your blessings on this meeting and on each of us as we go forward. Amen.
All right, next, we have Tanika Henderson for the Pledge of Allegiances.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, I don't think we have anybody for open forum. No. Okay, so we will move on to reports and presentations, and the first thing we have is Employee of the Month.
President and also Board of Trustees, Mr. Colbert, today I am proud to introduce to you Mr. Sebastian Velazquez, a utility craftsman too with our Facilities Division and the August 2024 Employee of the Month. Sebastian, who is HCD's main painter, has been described as an artist of the highest form. His attention to detail is so exquisite that his boss, Assistant Director of Facilities, Javier Lara, said he should sign his work. But you won't see Sebastian's compositions hanging in a museum or even a private home. His canvases are the walls of schools and offices as he takes pride in every stroke of his paintbrush. John Prestagio comma, Director of Facilities, said Sebastian routinely goes above and beyond in his work. Instead of just touching up a wall, he would repaint a whole classroom. Or if he's doing one or two rooms in a school, he would not be surprised for Sebastian to repaint the entire school so it looks cohesive. Even when he gets a work order to patch a hole in a wall, countless times he has found ways to reinforce the wall so it is resistant to holes, JP said. He is also happy to help out his fellow maintenance workers with events and such if they need it, and he does it while laughing and smiling. JP says Sebastian is the true artist who takes his work seriously, never spilling paint on the floor and receiving praise from his clients for his perfectly painted surfaces. He often brings issues to my attention he feels could use his talents, JP said in his nomination form. He tells me that he is going to take care of it even if he doesn't have a work order for it. JP noted that Sebastian's work ethic and attention to detail can best be seen with regard to a work order to fix holes in the walls of the time-out room in HCD's ABS schools. In true Sebastian form, he didn't just paint the room, he figured out a way to minimize future damage to the walls. Sebastian showed me how the walls were not reinforced properly and the issue would keep happening if we didn't improve the structure. He said he would need to take out the sheet rock in the room and replace the studs for stability, JP said. He basically gutted the room and rebuilt, rebuilt it in a better and sturdier way. Now the kids can't damage the walls in that room. Our communications team has prepared a short video about Sebastian's artistic contributions to ACDE.
My name is Sebastian Velazquez. I came from Mexico, San Luis Potosí. I can say all my life I worked on painting.
Perfection, good friend, and great coworker. His main thing is painting. He does carpentry, he does sheet rock, tape and float. We've had him out during our catastrophes here. He was out there hauling trees out, cutting trees.
Everything I can do right here in school, whatever they needed, I did cover. I love, I love to work. I want to do right, be on, on time. I love it, I love it, and I'm happy.
Always in a good mood. He's always in a good mood. He's never mad.
Wow, he looks amazing, Sebastian.
Thank you.
Geez, this place looks like a whole new journey. It's gonna be all light and bright for the kids.
Yeah.
Really appreciate you, man.
I told my daughter, my son, just go to school, do the, try to do something better, and I'm happy with my family.
Kind of take the blame for stealing. When I stole them from El Centro, they sure called me to let me know, hey, why did you steal our guy?
Thanks to Javier, they wanted to bring me right here. Thanks to God to put me this job, this work in Harris County, and I'm real happy.
Sebastian is a great asset for our facilities, and I'm sorry I stole them from El Centro, but I'm not.
Congratulating Mr. Sebastian Velazquez, our August 2024 Employee of the Month.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd first like to say that I really hope that when I turn 71, I look like Sebastian. Now, I know I got an uphill, yeah, I don't know how I'm gonna get this hair to grow back, but man, you talk about awesome. Really, three things to update everyone on. Happy to be back from Paris, the Olympics. My wife and I had a fantastic time there. We were able to spend six days there, and we saw the USA team play South Sudan in basketball. We watched a tennis match. We watched the German men play Argentina in indoor volleyball. We watched two episodes of Track and Field, and we watched China play indoor volleyball. While I was at the track meet, though, I saw that one of the athletes had gotten hurt, and I thought it was necessary for me to start warming up at the hotel because they might need me for the relay. They just didn't know, obviously, because they never called me. I was ready to go ahead with spikes and everything. So just a fantastic trip, but the most impactful thing that I saw was actually not the sports. I can't describe for you how it feels to be in a facility with 80,000 people from all over the world, and to see everybody get along, and everybody to celebrate their country, have pride, to celebrate each other. And it's really, you know, we can watch all the TV we want, but when you go outside and you go in the stadium, that's what society really looks like. And it was just powerful to see that, and I was so proud for all the people who won medals. Certainly, we were happy to represent the United States, but I was really happy for all the countries. So if you get a chance, you need to go to the Olympics. I don't know about the LA Olympics, I'm gonna pass on that one, but I'm definitely gonna go to another Olympics. Next, I had an opportunity this week with Mr. Parker to tour our campuses. We were able to visit all four campuses this week to make sure that they're ready to go for our students on Monday. They look in very good condition. We saw Sebastian's work all over the place where he had really cleaned up some places, and there was a couple of issues that we saw here and there, but all in all, I think we're gonna fare pretty well for next week. Having said that, I want to talk to you a little bit about the extensive professional development our teachers have been going through in preparation for school this year. And it's not unique to what they've done previously, but certainly I wanted to take this opportunity to identify the extended professional development that our administrators and teachers have been going through. From July 6th through August 12th, they have done an annual review of expectations, and this is an online course, so they can do that throughout those, that time period. Also, from July 6th through September 27th, they've been reviewing annual compliances online also. August 8th and August 9th, we've had a new teacher boot camp. August 13th, we had a new higher orientation. August 14th, Edge Annuity Fundamentals, and that's the software that we use to make sure that we're aligned with all the curriculum of the school districts that send us their children. August 15th, Power School Curriculum and Instruction. August 16th, Linking Literacy to Life, and they also had legal updates. August 19th, they had IEP and BIP, BIPS implementations, that's more special ed language. August 20th, Making Content Connections. August 21st and 22nd, they'll have opportunities to spend time in their classroom to prepare, and they've also been working in their classroom once they've completed those sections of the previous things that I've mentioned. August 23rd, they'll do CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Intervention. All of our staff is trained on that. In fact, we have staff that can be trainers. And then finally, we will start our first day of school on August 26th, which is Monday. So I really want to commend Mr. Parker, Dr. Ned, all of our principals for all the work that they've done. Every campus that I went to saw teachers engaged in some type of professional development and getting ready for school, so I think we're in good shape. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you, and with that, we'll move on to our annual division update.
Madam President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Colbert, it's my pleasure to bring to you the IT Services Annual Update. I want to present to you our team. As you can tell, we borrowed the third floor right before it was handed over to the people that occupy it now, since our floor is currently being renovated. As you can see, we are all goofing off as we normally do in the photo. So in case anyone forgot, I wanted to mention that we received second place at the Chili Cook-Off. I'm confident that we'll get first place next year, and we'll come for your trophy, Our division is made up of five functional areas. As I call out the leadership team, please have your staff stand so that they can be recognized. The service desk is headed by Jamie Salinas. Please have your team stand. George Hembray leads the Operations and Infrastructure Team. Tim Davis, our Application Support Team. John Crete, Information Security. And Tanika Henderson for our newly inducted Project Management Office. Also, training, technical training and process improvement fall under her. So who are we? We feel that it's easy to prioritize technology gadgets and apps when you're thinking about information technology. However, IT is comprised of consummate professionals devoting their lives to building, deploying, and maintaining the vast accumulation of tech that enables us to do exceptional work. We recognize that people are the key to our success and are the ultimate contributors to HCD's success. Developing our people, building into transformational leadership, promoting from within where feasible, and providing meaningful recognition help to bolster our appreciation for our dedicated IT staff. In addition to those things, we have commissioned a numbered and serialized challenge coin to celebrate excellence within our division. These are only awarded for outstanding work above and beyond daily duties. In '23 and '24, we awarded 20 coins to information technology staff so far, and these are just some of them. Here you can see a few of our mark of excellent awardees. Some of the services provided, our service portfolio has not changed much since last year, and I will only highlight a few of the products we offer. For example, email accounts and permissions, connectivity such as internet access, Wi-Fi and AV connectivity, AV support for large meetings and special events. This includes production and transmission of this board meeting. Learning management systems and enterprise resource planning platforms. An in-house curated technology training department that offers custom training sessions to staff and coordinates the professional development of internal IT certifications. Personalized phone and desktop and desk-side technical support. Securing our digital space using active and passive tools to ensure protection and privacy of data. A newly established project management office to ensure delivery of HCD initiatives and through which we endeavor to improve organizational and business processes via data-driven methodologies, among many other things. These next few slides will show you what each of our functional areas actually do. I'm not gonna read through them, but they are there for your edification. So we start with the Service Desk and all the things they do. Operations and Infrastructure, and all they do. Information Security. Applications. The Project Management Office. And now we come to our by-the-number slides and dashboards. Again, I'm not gonna go through every point therein, but as you can see, our Service Desk handled 7,475 tickets in the last 365 days. The customer satisfaction based on surveys that are sent out after each ticket is 97.9%. Tickets received are usually via phone or email, and the category of tickets are represented here. Our first-contact resolution rate is 90.4%. This next dashboard covers our infrastructure, which took a beating during Hurricane Barrel. Individual sites were down primarily due to power, including Irvington and NPO. However, three other sites also incurred fiber outages, which would have been, which would have made our numbers even worse had it not been for our newly implemented 5G redundant networks at those sites. So we strive to provide four nines of availability, and that's 99.99%. Those numbers are not usually achievable. Four nines means an allowable outage of any system or link of only 52 minutes and 10 seconds per year. This year, counting the longest outage brought our overall availability average to 98.1%. This is equivalent to six days, 19 hours, and 26 minutes for the year. As you can see, our worst-performing site was Baytown at 96.66%, which is equivalent to 12 days, 2 hours, and 22 minutes. That's for the year. Of note, however, is that our main site, which is Irvington, was brought back online in less than 24 hours after the hurricane. This allowed business services and payroll to process pay stubs for employees during the week that we were closed. Our on-premises server uptime is comprised of Irvington and NPO, and this is our data center. Irvington is 99.59% and NPO is 98.67%. Our cloud-based infrastructure is 99.99 or better, and our e-finance systems have been up for 99.1% for the entire year. And I've got some stats for connectivity. The inception of the Project Management Office just five months ago began with a PMO charter, which includes these tenets instrumental in a successful transition to structured project management. We've already seen results by formally transitioning the project portfolio over from the functional areas at random and closing out several key projects and initiatives. Previously, our Application Services Team ran the majority of the projects and platforms that run HCD. Among these, building, upplanning, and updating and upgrading in-house apps such as ARBs and Travel Management System, the Budget Plating Application, the Request to Attend, and multiple electronic forms of workflows. They're also key to maintaining the most critical application in our organization, which is the e-finance platform. Additionally, the Applications Team, in conjunction with PMO, were able to roll out platforms such as Schoology LMS, Professional Learning, Employee Records, Perform, and Paperless HR. Also, process improvement and mapping projects such as the Student Information System, Choice Partners Business Process Improvement, P Card Process Mapping, and Contract Management Process Improvement. We also have numerous forms, workflows, and reports being developed to more efficiently conduct business. Developing our technology training was a key focus this year, with a curriculum owned and developed in-house to produce meaningful, relevant technology training to all staff, including the coordination of in-house technology certification and professional development. We produced and delivered 75 custom training sessions comprised of 24 Lunch and Learns, 22 Individual, 21 Division-wide, and eight Vendor Trainings respectively. With new employee orientations now being conducted in person this year, we have so far produced content for and attended 37 orientation sessions facilitating over 200 new employees. Also, current training projects are focused on providing training for major platforms being rolled out in the Power School platform. We have a technology training website where training and custom requests can be requested. We also maintain our LinkedIn tenant, which provides self-paced electronic learning and training for all employees at HCD. Some more highlights. We have surveyed satisfaction rate of over 98%. And then Information Security. Our Information Security Office has maintained a vigilant security stance, improving our protection with active and passive measures, which have been successful in repelling a diverse threat taxonomy throughout the year. Microsoft, who is a market leader in enterprise software providers, has given HCD a secure score of 71.37%, which is 42%, 43%, I'm sorry, 28% better than most other typical organizations such as ours. Keep in mind that if we had a secure score of 100, it would be almost impossible to conduct business and maintain a pleasant working environment. So we do everything we can to maintain a semblance of usability versus security. Additionally, keep in mind we've got these other stats. Our ISO, our Information Security Officer, has performed 1,218 security actions and investigations in the last six months. In the last 90 days, over 5,000 attacks were blocked via security policy. 768 web addresses blocked across two specific categories and policies, and users are doing their part by reporting 82 messages in the last 30 days. Threat taxonomy, sorry, threat taxonomy over 24 hours is spread out over four main groups, comprised of organized campaigns with a bulk of activity, vulnerability exploits, ransomware attacks, and phishing campaigns making up the rest. And here we have some email statistics. Finally, email activity, in addition to spam and phishing campaigns, try to snare unsuspecting users and/or exploit vulnerabilities through impersonation. We rely on automation and smart policies to assist in the never-ending battle to combat cyber threats. And to do that, and to that effect, our email system does a tremendous amount of heavy lifting every second of the day. In the last 90 days, HCD processed 2.2 million inbound emails. In the last 90 days, HCD processed 2.2 million inbound emails, over half of which were spam. 1.3 million of those were good emails. And HCD sent 350,000 emails intra-organization in the last 90 days. And this shows our phishing and malware campaign threat map. The reason you don't see other countries is because we impart a geo-fence that blocks access from areas such as Eastern Europe, China, North Korea, and Oceania. And in summation, have some key highlights for fiscal year '24. Despite extended outages across most sites due to Hurricane Barrel, we still maintain a combined uptime of 98.12%. Additionally, we have a very good customer satisfaction rate through our service desk, which is, we have two surveys. One of them is the service desk survey that is sent out with every ticket, which is 97.9%. And then we have the HCD-wide customer satisfaction survey, which shows that people are generally happy at 97.75%. We implemented a near-paperless HR applicant tracking system through employee records. We implemented Perform, which is a performance evaluation system, and it's now in its first iteration, first year of use. We're also working on talent retention via mild reorganization of the division and creating key leadership positions to provide career pathways to aspire to. Also full-service training. And we leverage E-Rate grants to provide high-end networking, bandwidth, and security hardware to augment tax-funded programs. We also bring additional value to the taxpayer via E-Rate. And we've been working on eliminating single points of failure as an ongoing focus in '24. As well, we implemented 5G redundant networks at the remote sites, mainly the campuses and headstart sites. And we've invested over $2 million in networking infrastructure as well as compute in the last two years, and this is an ongoing modernization of the entire environment. Although we don't immediately cave to every type, every hype trend in the industry, the following could apply to HCD in one way or another. AI and deep learning apps in the classroom. The proliferation of apps and so-called AI places great strain on our ability to protect organizations' institutional data from exfiltration by these apps. We need to, we need to train people to use the models properly and safely, and also respect our industrial data. Prompt engineering materials and classes have been provided by our ISO and training department towards creating a more informed user base, but more are planned. Not all tools are bad, though, and we recognize that they have a place in our future toolbox as they pertain to education and increased productivity. There will be more in this, on this as the years go by and the tools reach a certain maturity level. Our reliance on technology and devices increases every year. So we need to find cost-effective ways of ensuring availability of technology to educators and staff. Effective maintenance and extended service life cycles can help to achieve this. Also, the increase in cybersecurity sophistication must have a match in protection. Also, there is merit in having cloud-based solutions for critical backups. And then there is a large rollout of 5G networks all over the world, and that is bringing cost-effective solutions and data connectivity options to more markets. How may I address your questions?
I would just like to say that our technology department is the thing that we don't think about most, but is always hovering and wrapped around us. I see our department as primarily focusing on protection. They also create. They're very good at creating software and helping like with their dashboards, informing, serving and responding, but also installing. I mean, some of the help desk, you'd be amazed that some folks don't know how to hook their printer up yet or even put paper in it. So, but the other burden that we put on our technology department is to see into the future. Technology throughout the world is moving at a speed faster than we can perceive. Just a glimpse of the threats that organizations like ours, especially public servant governmental organizations, are under attack all over the world. And we've been blessed that we haven't been held hostage with our own data yet. And that's largely due to the efforts of you and your department. So I just want to tell all of you how much I appreciate you all and everything that you do every single day. And they are hidden throughout the crevices of our building. You don't always see them. They have a little back cave down there where it's no lights in there and it's all these monitors. But we have a level of security that I think others would envy. And so thank you for your leadership and thank you to your department.
Thank you for your continued support and shared vision.
Thank you. Next is other reports from board members concerning attendance or participation in board or HCD-related conferences. Anybody have anything? Then we'll proceed to any reports from committee chairs. And so then we'll open up the floor for monthly financial reports.
The first report are financial highlights as of July 31st. All our information is posted on our webpage. Balance sheet for the month of July, total assets of $42,637,491. Liabilities of $2,698,736. An equity of $39,412,223. Our estimated fund balance as of July is $39,412,223, which includes approximately $14,24190 in excess as of July, with one month left to go. Our indicators, financial ratios, the percent of fund balance to expenditures were at 30%. Very similar to where we were last year at the same time at 31%. Our working capital ratio increased by $10 million in the month of July from 29 to 39 million, primarily is the maintenance note that was issued a couple months ago. On assigned fund balance ratio, we're at 41% from reserves versus 58%. Again, we still have one month left in the year. And our debt income to income ratio, we're at 3.5% versus 7.1%. We have one more payment in August, and you will see that increase to approximately 6%. Tax revenue to total revenue ratio, we're at 22% comparable to last year at 26% for the year. And our indirect cost ratio, 2.7% versus 3% for the year before. Fee-for-service ratio, we're at 18% versus 20% at the same time last year. And our growth ratio has been increasing to 18% where last year at the same time we're at 13%. Amendments, we had one in, early in September of last year, and I believe we have several others this month and later in a couple slides. Our revenues or inflows, we're at 90, 99% of the year. And special revenues are 55%. Overall budget to action, we're at 77% in terms of our revenues. The main one, which is general fund, we're at about $700,000 from going over the budget and being able to meet all our revenue projections for the year. In expenditures, we're at 92% of the fiscal year lapse. However, we've only spent 78% of our appropriations. So we are still under that for the month of July, so one more month to go. And so we're overall, we're at 69%. So it's a good thing that revenues are coming in, expenditures are not as, running in the same parallel. So we should, knock on wood, have a good end of the year. Our disaster relief COVID-19, we still have $107,971. And so we will use that in the month of August for some of our last payments. Our donations for the month of July, $12,544. And year-to-date, we're at $244,794, and primarily some supplies and passes that receive for Head Start that were received from Constable Precinct 3 and also Children's In our property values, the beginning of the year last year, we started at $639 billion. Right now, as of July, we're at $642 billion for the year. So we should have a little bit more in tax revenue for the year with one month left to go. Year-to-date, we have collected 99.3%, which is about $200,000 still pending to be collected in our current tax. We've had to do some refunds, so that's where you see the negative $378,533. Our fees to collect the tax, tax office $609,000. And our appraisal district fees are $184,764. So we are at 99.3% versus last year. At the same time, we were 101%. However, if you compare the overall tax, last year we were at 27.6% versus 30.4% this year. So we've collected more tax, and so you will see that level off in the last month. Our disbursements for the month of July, we had 359 transactions, disbursements, 457 P-card transactions, six transfers totaling $5,605,708. Our budget to actual data for selected divisions, we have Center for Educational Success, benefit variance of $1,555,403. Records management of $421,379. And therapy, $2,742,525. And schools at $2,868,776. Our choice partners is a, continues to improve and have record revenues. So for the first time now, we are at over $10 million. So we're at 11, or the department and choice is at 11.4, which is a ratio of 355% or a transfer out to the general fund to $8,901,433. Amendments for the month. Amendment to increase the retirement benefits fund. We have additional retirees, and so we had to increase for some of the payouts $250,000. And then we have four other amendments for grants. One for Head Start for the amount of $200,000 for Barrett Station Playground to augment and be able to finish that project. Adult ed education grant for additional classes, $11,165. Another adult ed by $31,847. Again, the increase in cost of salaries. And then K is $150,000. It's a rollover in the additional monies received from cycle 12, $150,000. And the choice partners, so we had to amend the budget by $4,365,000 revenues, and then also workers' compensation fund by $20,000, which monies that we have available in the workers' comp fund or, yes, internal service fund for the year. In terms of our foundation, educational foundation, we still have $491,202. And so you see all the balances are included in your packet. In terms of our revenue bonds and projects, we continue with the small business program, and we have leftover in the project acquisition account of $5,010,424, which includes a combination of PFC and maintenance note from the 2020 bond issue or bond issuance. We do have pending retainer payable of $1,972,104. And then we have the 2024 maintenance note. Again, we have $16,201,53 pending and available for appropriation and for the renovation and also other projects for the year. From duratec retainage, we have $23,046 from the maintenance notes. Overall, all the projects are completed, just we need to finish with the retainer. And the last slide that I wanted to mention is we have remaining funds available in the maintenance note of $3,810,60. That is the report for the month of July. What questions do you have?
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions?
The next report is the investment report.
Just one quick one, I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair. Adam, President. Members, Dr. Meskow, great job as always. Just a real quick question. Do you anticipate any additional budget amendments?
No, this will be the, this will be the final amended budget.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, usually August is the last month that we amend. We look at all the accounts and see if there's any overages, and that's why we brought the retirees.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Investments report. And as you probably have heard, that there may be a reduction in the Fed funds rate coming up maybe September. We will see if that does materialize. For the investment side, it's not such a good thing, but from the debt side, it's a good thing. So it just depends on which side you're at. Our portfolio is $64,791,143. And we have primarily in Texas class, Texas Star, Chase, Lone Star, and Tech Pool, all four pools. And the PFC, we have those on Tech Pool as well. Year-to-date, I'm sorry, a combination from last year to this year, the comparison, our portfolio is 16% larger by $9,164,806. All our funds are overnight at this point in time. At some point, we're going to extend that into nine to 12 months. And we've earned $2,618,183. And in the PFC, $20,858. We're earning right now 5.31. And those are being the rates that have gone up. And yeah, you may actually see, start seeing the opposite effect going in the next, the last quarter. That's the report for investment. What questions do you have? Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to our consensus items. Does anyone have any items they'd like to pull today?
I just have questions on E4 and 5.
I just have questions on E4 and 5. So we could pull that, please.
Do you want us to separate vote on those matters? Because you can still ask questions.
You can still ask questions anytime on any consensus item.
I don't think it'll need a separate vote.
Okay. Separate votes, if anybody wants a separate vote on the consensus item, that would be appropriate to pull.
So I'll open it up for discussion in a minute. All right. So do I have a movement? So moved by Trustee McGee, seconded by Trustee Dick. All in favor?
Oh, wait, nope. Discussion.
Do we have any discussions?
Okay, so items E4 and 5. There's just one on E4. Barbers Hill ISD is listed under contracting with ABS West. And I'm wondering why it wouldn't be with 5 under ABS East?
Yes, ma'am. That's an error. That should be under East. Barbers Hill should be under East.
Is that going to cause something if we don't switch that over in the?
Barbers Hill.
Everything else would make sense to work with ABS West. Yeah, but Barbers Hill is far east, so.
It would be a friendly amendment if Trustee McGee and Trustee Dick agreed to amend their motion and second respectively to reflect for Barbers Hill ISD to be under item 5 instead of under item 4.
Sure.
Perfect.
Do we need to do anything before we move to vote for that?
I am.
Good to go. Thanks. All right. If there's no other discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes 5. Onto our action items. The first item is consider ratification of the service agreement between Adult Education and Launchpoint CDC in the amount not to exceed $113,000 for the period of 7/1/2024 through 6/30/2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion?
Yes, please. Could I just hear a little bit about Launchpoint CDC and why this organization was chosen?
Launchpoint basically participated in RFP, I believe about five years ago or four years ago. And they were one of the chosen providers. They provide services. They've been a provider for us for the past couple of years, been in good standing and provide excellent services, not just in terms of the classes that they offer, but also providing connections with employers for employment for our students. So we're satisfied with this provider.
Helps me. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question. Are the services provided by Launchpoint here at Adult Ed or at their location?
They're right here.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. The next item is consider ratification of the service agreement expenditure between Adult Education and Burlington English in the amount not to exceed $107,328 for the period of 7/1/24 through 6/30/25. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Motion passes 5-0. The next action is to consider approval of renewal insurance premium for property and casualty insurance with McGriff, Seivels, and Williams of Texas for a total premium amount of $1,077,687 for the period of 10/1/24 through 10/1/25. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee McGee, seconded by Trustee Dick. Any discussion?
Quick question. Just a quick question, Madam President. Does this, is this an increase? Did we see an increase? Decrease?
$15,000.
Okay, great.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Next, consider approval of the service agreement expenditure between Facilities and Blue Knight Security for security services at the HCDE Administration and North Post Oak Buildings. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion?
There we go. Yeah, we can just have an explanation. It looks like we're changing contractors.
Madam President. I would like to pull that in executive session if you want to have a discussion with that and get some legal advice.
As well as safety and security.
Safety and security.
Thank you.
So we can pull this and bring it back after executive session.
Trustee Dick and Trustee Cantu can withdraw your motion.
So do.
Thank you. Moving on, consider approval to purchase two new trucks. International 2025 MV607 4x2 with 26 van and international 2025 MV601 4x2 with 20 van from Santex Truck Center LTD. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee Cantu. I have a discussion. So I just like some more information on this. What is this?
These are trucks. These are actually the 24 and 26 foot trucks for record services.
So this is just to you?
It's actually replacing. We have two, we actually have three trucks now. Two of them are kind of on their way out. One of them is actually on his way out and the other one is too much work on them. They're over 20 years old and 30 years old. So it's time to replace and get newer items so we can last another 20 years with them.
So these are two vehicles that are to replace two of our vehicles.
Replace two, yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All right, put it to a vote. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Next is consider approval of an agreement expenditure between school divisions and Imagine Learning in the aggregate amount of $139,453 for the contract period of 9/1/24 through 8/31/27. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee McGee. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Next is consider approval of the agreement expenditure between Case for Kids and Cypress Fairbanks Independent School Districts, Richard E. Berry Educational Support Center in the aggregate amount of $95,138 for the period of 9/26/24 through 9/28/24. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion? Trustee Duhon?
I really just want to hear Dr. Carruthers talk about this, that's all.
We're very excited. This is our first conference since COVID. So the community is really excited as well, and we are going out to the Berry Center. Unfortunately, I hear you guys are going to be at a conference yourself. So I'm so sad. I was hoping to integrate you into our community dialogues, but.
I'll be there. I'm not going to go to Tazby. I can't make it.
All right, so, great. We will, I will, I'm working with Jessica to get the information out tomorrow. So we're very excited about the conference. We hope it is not going to be this expensive. This contract does include both food and space, so that is why it looks large. We're hoping to get it, this is if everything, we used everything humanly possible. We're hoping to get this down into the 70,000 range, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Next is pursuant to board policy, consider approval, wait, FO legal, consider approval to the HCDE Schools Division Student Code of Conduct for school year 2024-2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee McGee. And just can I have an explanation of what this is?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, this is an annual request. This is a requirement from TEA that we have your approval for our student code of conduct.
Okay, so this is the regular school, the regular code of conduct, okay. Nothing's changed or updated?
Only a few minor changes. There may have been some dress code changes. We've actually kind of tightened that up a little bit and some contraband changes.
Okay. All right. Any further questions on that? Put it to a vote. All in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Next is to consider electing a board delegate and an alternate at the 2024 Tazby Delegate Assembly. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Duhon, seconded by Trustee McGee.
Yeah, yeah. I was just like, are we doing this in discussion? But if it would be appreciated, I would like to nominate President Inohosa to be our delegate to the assembly. Oh, and an alternate. Who's attending? Trustee Cantu.
I think they attend.
Well, I nominate President Inohosa as the delegate and Trustee Cantu as the alternate. You're here, so.
Okay, so with that, thank you. And with that, we can put it to a vote now? Okay, all in favor? All right, motion passes 5-0. Are we the only two going? Trustee Cantu? Is anyone else going?
I don't know, but I'm not always the first to go.
Yeah, to the conference. Are you going to be at Tazby?
I'll be there.
Okay.
Not always.
So next is consider approval of revised HCDE calendar for 2024 to 2025. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Duhon, seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion?
What is the difference?
This is going to impact the 240-day calendar, and it was revised to include Juneteenth.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Motion passes, and I think that was a hand. Trustee Dick, yes? Okay, motion passes 5-0. We will now move to executive session under the Texas Government Code pursuant to any and all purposes permitted by sections 551.001 to 551.084, including but not limited to 551.071 and 551.074. We are now adjourned for executive session at 2:07. All right, we are back to reconvene from executive session at 2:59 PM. And we will begin with action item 7-4. So 7-4 is to consider approval of the service agreement between Facilities and Blue Knight Security for security services at the HCD Administration and Post Oak, North Post Oak Buildings. Do I have a motion?
I will.
Motion by Trustee Cantu, seconded by Trustee Duhon. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, put it to a vote. Motion passes 5-0. And then do we have any other motions?
Yes, Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the resolution finding that Courtney Dixon failed without good cause to comply with the resignation requirements of the Texas Education Code and abandoned her Chapter 21 term employment contract and to authorize the superintendent or his designate to file a complaint with DEA or ESPEC regarding the same.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion? Put it to a vote. Motion passes 5-0. And with that, I'm, do we add him 10? Discussion and possible action regarding future agenda items. Does anyone have anything? Okay. All right, so with that, I think we can move to, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Motion by Trustee Dick, seconded by Trustee Cantu. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? And with that, meeting is adjourned at 3:01 PM.